Good afternoon, everyone. I call to order today's meeting of the Boston City Council. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube at boston.gov/city-council-tv. At this time, I ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the floor to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta Zapata. Counselor Durkin. Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
Here.
Counselor Durkin here. Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald.
Here.
Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Lou Jean.
Here.
Counselor Mejia.
Here.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Pepe.
Here.
Counselor Santana.
Here.
Counselor Weber.
Here.
And Counselor Worrell. A quorum is present.
Thank you. I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. It's also great to have our 14th counselor, Mike, here with us. So, welcome back, Mike. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce this week's clergy, Matthew Thompson Jr. from Jubilee Christian Church, invited by Counselor Santana. Counselor Santana, you have the floor, and after the invocation, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you, Madam President. I'm honored today to introduce, and you can come right up here, Minister Matthew Keith Thompson Jr. from Jubilee Christian Church in Mattapan. Minister Matthew Keith Thompson Jr. is a youth pastor for Jubilee Christian Church Youth and Young Adults Ministries called Citywide and Influence. Citywide focuses on empowering youth through mentorship and leadership development, while Influence works to inspire young adults to make a positive impact in their neighborhoods. Both ministries emphasize the importance of providing a safe space for young people to express themselves and engage civically. Minister Thompson is a 24-year-old basketball player, spoken-word artist, social justice advocate, and husband to his beautiful wife of one year, Brianna Thompson. His youth ministry has touched the lives of thousands of youth as he does his best to not only present the gospel to young people, but also give a safe space to heal, have fun, and be themselves. I had the opportunity to meet with Minister Thompson over a month ago, where we spent much of our time discussing the vital need to equip our youth with resources and safe spaces and to encourage their civic engagement. As many of you know, my number-one priority on the council has been our youth. I truly believe that by investing in our young people, we invest in the future of our city. Thank you, Minister, for joining us today. I look forward to hearing your words of inspiration.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm super honored to be here. I know Henry just said that I'm 23. I'm actually 24, but still at 24 years old to be able to come here as a minister and talk about what I love, which is young people, is an opportunity that I don't take lightly. Today is actually the day that my church celebrates 42 years of ministry. Across three generations, we've been doing ministry in Mattapan. My grandfather started the church 42 years ago, and this is the exact day that we celebrate it. And we actually have a conference this entire week that will just be celebrating 42 years of ministry. It just reminded me that nothing happens by accident, that everything happens on purpose, that the day that we get to celebrate the generational blessing that God gives to all of us is also the day that I get to come here at 24 years old, the youngest, fourth, fifth-generation pastor, actually, and being able to come here and speak with you all. When I think about how we look in the Bible, we see Father Abraham. Normally, when you see in the Bible, it says that it is the blessing of Abraham, or God is the God of Abraham. Whenever you see that, it actually is talking about God is the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, because God is a God of generations, not just one generation. And one thing that I love about City Councilor Henry is that he came to me saying that we need to take care of the young people as well. And that's something that I'm super excited about, because that's what my church has always done, that my grandfather had a vision that it wouldn't just be his generation that would be touched, but it would be every generation that would be able to be blessed. And so, I'm super excited to be able to stand here and know that our city doesn't just care about one generation, but every generation. And so, with that being said, let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you and we praise you before we ask you for anything. We thank you for everything. We thank you that the sun rose up this morning. We thank you that there's breath inside of our lungs. We thank you that we get to stand here today in order to improve this city, in order to talk about what needs to go down, in order to stand here saying that we love the city of Boston. God, it says in your word that we love because you first loved us. And so, because of your love, we get to demonstrate love in other places, and not just love for our own generation, but love for every single generation. Lord, will you help us today as we talk? Will you help us today as we listen to not just be a multi-generational city, but an intergenerational city? Lord, we don't want just pockets of generations all over the place. We want every generation to be connected to one another so that we can learn and we can grow together. And so, God, will you just do what only you can do? And we pray all of this in your son's name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
You'll now recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Counselor Santana, and thank you, Minister Matt. Your church indeed has been an important beacon for young people like myself growing up, and we thank you and your church for the generations of leadership your family has provided. Mr. Clerk, if we could please amend the record to reflect that Counselor Gabriela Coletta Zapata is now with us. Thank you. We are now on to presentations. Today, we have one presentation from myself and Counselor Mejia, recognizing the founders of Shakira Story Domestic Violence and Consulting. So, if Counselor Mejia will join me up, and Shakira and team, if you'll join me up as well, I'll start reading your incredible bio. Shakira Robinson is a mother of three, graduated summa cum laude from Rasmussen University, class of '21, with a BS in Criminal Justice with a focus on management and leadership. Shakira has since returned, where she's received recently her master's degree in public health. In 2004, Shakira graduated as the president of the Early Childhood Education Program at Bay State College, where she received her associate's degree. Activism and advocacy runs in her blood. She is herself a survivor of domestic violence, and it's two of the many hats she wears, both as victim and as survivor. She's known for her optimism and charisma, and charisma that she is. Friends would say that despite her lived experience with sexual assault and DV, she's a beacon of hope and positivity to those surviving these traumatic events. These lived experiences qualify her as an expert in DV, in the DV pandemic that plays communities across all sectors. Today, we're recognizing October, as we did last year, as Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. I could think of no one better than Shakira to have here this month. This year, I had the honor of joining her at her Mother's Day event for survivors and victims of domestic violence. And we on the council had declared May 11th, May 13th, May Day, where we recognize Deja Nicole Jenkins, someone who had passed from domestic violence, and we recognized Mimi and her family for all that they have done in advocacy to help those who are survivors of domestic violence and to also bring healing and love to their families. So, I just want to say, there's so much more to this bio, but I want to say thank you, Shakira, for all of the tremendous work that you do from your heart for the city of Boston. I remember that. I remember when I first heard and learned of who you are and your name and the power which you bring to everything that you do. So, as we raise awareness on domestic violence, I am honored to have Shakira with us here and the incredible founders of Shakira Story Domestic Violence Consulting. I'm now going to pass it over to Counselor Mejia to say a few words.
And literally, I got one minute, so put the clock on. Good afternoon, everyone. Really excited to be here. Shakira, I actually met her over, I believe, 10 years ago, and someone had reached out to me around doing a domestic violence workshop. And if you know anything about the work that we've been doing here, it's always about stepping to the side and giving the microphone to other people so that they can amplify their stories. And I volunteered Shakira without telling her, but I recommended that she be the one to do the workshop, and it was one of the things that I really felt deep in my heart, that when someone has profound lived experience, they're the ones who are best suited to really advocate and create space. And since then, I have seen Shakira go from a workshop leader to a conference go-getter to now having her own business and really uplifting the stories and championing this work, not just here in the city of Boston, but statewide and really moving policy in ways that meets the moment. So, Shakira, I'm really excited to honor you today.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you all for being here. I want to thank the Office of Counselor Ruzzi and Counselor Mejia for honoring our team with this prestigious recognition today. We accept this resolution on behalf of domestic and sexual abuse advocates, allies, victims, survivors, and their families. Our team is grateful for the partnership we have with our sister organizations, Track, MFAK, MLRI Respond, Inc., the Lower Roxbury Coalition Wellness Initiative, Seven Hills Foundation Community Connections Coalition, the Massachusetts League of Women Voters, Jane Doe, Jane Does Well, Stuck 617, Follow Suit, the Mimi Movement, Deja Star Witness, Beyond the Tail, and countless others. As we celebrate this formal, the city's formal recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we want to make room for the survivors and victims who either feel silence, unseen, unheard, unsupported, and to those who are still trying to find their voice while navigating the complexities of multiple systems. We want you to know that we see you, we hear you, we uplift you, we are with you, and we will always amplify your voices in every room. Your lived experiences do not define you, and that they are not the final chapters of your story. Your voices and ideas about how we can reimagine a world free from abuse are invaluable, and that we welcome you to join this movement to be the changes that we seek. Domestic abuse is a public health issue that continues to plague the lives of those it affects. It exasperates the systems and public policies designed to protect victims, and is a multifaceted barrier for many who are meeting the criminal legal system for the first time. A multidisciplinary approach must include the voices of survivors at the forefront of intervention, prevention, and sustainability as it relates to addressing the harms caused by intimate partner violence. We strongly believe that cultural humility is a critical first step in addressing the harms of domestic and sexual abuse. It is our mission to address individuals, groups, subgroups, while fostering individuality in our efforts to disrupt the cycle of intergenerational trauma. Again, we want to thank you, the city of Boston, for taking a stand in solidarity with survivors across the Commonwealth. Today, we stand together as we close the gaps on how victims and survivors are seen on a municipal level through support of our city councils. Tomorrow, we will remember the lives of those who are no longer with us as we exercise our civic engagement muscles through public policy advocacy and awareness with a collective commitment approach as we harness the power of the people through active and effective community engagement. And to the future, to the future abuse prevention advocates and allies, may we unite and always leave a light on, such that the upcoming trailblazers may see it and continue to restore hope and justice for survivors and domestic abuse and sexual assault across the Commonwealth of all sectors. To Boston, to the state of Massachusetts, all rise in recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Thank you. Thank you. Shakira, if you could stay here. We have this citation. I just want to reiterate, when at Mother's Day event, the way that you made victims and survivors feel seen and appreciated and loved, you are a force of nature in this city on using your pain and your experience with domestic violence and really teaching us how we need to allocate resources. So, this is a citation in October during Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. This is an official resolution presented by me and Counselor-at-Large Julia Mejia. Be it resolved that the Boston City Council extends its congratulations to you in recognition of your tireless activism and advocacy for victims and survivors of domestic violence, founding of Shakira Story Domestic Violence Consulting and Coaching, and offering essential resources to those affected by domestic violence. And I also just want to say the names of the co-founders, Callie, Adriana, Vladimir, Donald Osgood, who we all know, and Daniel Drummond, and also shout out to Tasha, the secretary. We have citations for you as well, for Donald. Here you go, for all of your work in co-founding Shakira Story. To you, Callie, thank you. And then comes from here. These are for the others. If I could please have my colleagues join us for a photo? Come on. Yeah, right here. He's still here. Excuse me, there is no, there is no speaking from the audience. There is no speaking in the audience. There is, there is no speaking in the audience. I want to thank you, Shakira Story Domestic Violence Consulting and Coaching. There is no, this is my, this is a warning that there is no speaking in a city council meeting. There is no, there is no speaking during a city council meeting. There is no, if you would like to stay in chambers, there is no speaking. This is the second warning. You are, we will have to remove you from chambers if you continue to speak. There is no speaking from the audience. There is no speaking from members of the audience. We are in recess. There is no speaking or disrupting city council meeting. We are in recess. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, will you please amend the record to reflect that Counselor Worrell is now present and with us?
Yes.
Thank you. We are now on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of September 25, 2024. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Okay. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. So, I object because I believe the minutes from the last meeting are incorrect because of a troubling pattern of nonresponsiveness from the mayor's office regarding our request for essential information. Despite my initial request three weeks ago for documents identified in the Boston Planning Department's memo related to the approval of the project at White Stadium, in a follow-up last week, my office and this body have yet to receive any documents or any communication from the administration or IGR. As outlined in Section 17F of Chapter 452 of the Acts in 1948, the mayor is legally obligated to respond to our inquiries in a timely manner. By allowing the administration to ignore the city charter, the laws that are not mayor guidelines, and are not subject to the whims of any administration, we undermine the very foundation of our governance. The charter grants us, as counselors, the limited power we possess, and the mayor's ongoing inaction is a direct violation of these laws. This lack of adherence to established protocol is not only frustrating, but fundamentally undermines our effectiveness as a council and our duty to serve the citizens of Boston. In an effort to obtain the necessary information, I have been forced to also file a Freedom of Information ask request. It is disheartening that as a counselor, I should have to resort to such measures to receive information that is rightfully ours and clearly outlined in the city charter. In an article on June 11, 2020, then-counselor Mayor Wu was quoted after she had filed the 17F at yesterday's Boston City Council meeting. The council voted to advance an internal 17F order, as it is technically called, that I filed. This is a request that the city charter gives to the city council.
The power that the city charter gives to the council to request information from the mayor with a deadline of seven?
I'll keep going. I'll speak louder. Moreover, the administration continued to disregard my requests, coupled with their failure to communicate the reasons for these delays, reflects a broader disregard for transparency and accountability. This behavior erodes public trust and sets a dangerous precedent. I urge the mayor to provide an immediate explanation for this unacceptable delay and to ensure that our requests are met with the urgency they deserve moving forward. Given the continued silence and lack of compliance, I feel compelled to invoke our summons power under Chapter 233, Section 8, to compel a response. It is imperative that we uphold the laws that govern our city and restore the public's faith in their government.
So, just so that I'm clear, Counselor Murphy, are you seeking a correction of the minutes?
Yes, and also invoking Chapter 233, Section 8, requesting that we get this information before we move forward with council business. We can take a recess if we need to, to discuss.
Okay, we're gonna, we're in a brief recess. There was one person who did not agree to the minutes, but there is no correction being offered. And so, there's an ongoing 17F issue, which I will, which I learned of today. I will, in my role as president of the body, will try my best to get answers for Counselor Murphy. I did not know that it was an issue, and I will do my job as I can to get answers for you, Counselor Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you, President. And just to be clear, when a counselor files a 17F, respectfully waits more than the time, the seven days, two weeks, and then on the third week, files a second refile. I think it was clear to all of my colleagues. And it's, like I said, I think this is my third time filing a second request for the same information three, four weeks later. So, I think it was very clear from my past filings that I have not been given the, and when we all sign on, it's information we should all want.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Thank you.
You were aware, so thank you. I appreciate going forward.
I knew that it was on the docket, but that it was coming to the point that you wanted to disapprove of the minutes as a result of them not responding. Now, I'm willing and happy to be more engaged in the process. As long as any counselor tells me that they are having an issue, my office is available to you to come and have that conversation, more than happy to do so on your behalf.
I appreciate that. And just to end saying, I wish I never, like I've said on this floor, I never thought I'd file so many 17Fs, but with the lack of commissioners, heads of departments, the mayor herself picking up phone calls or answering texts, it is a forced thing. So, today, I felt forced because they're still not even letting me know it's coming or that it's on the way or that they even care if I get it. So, it's information the public's been asking for, it's information that we deserve, just like then-counselor Wu had stated. It's in the charter, it's a law of the administration, as seven days, we're on day 21. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will do my best, now that I am more aware of the situation, of getting you those answers.
Thank you.
So, we have the minutes are approved 12 to 1. Mr. Clerk, thank you. We are now on to communications from her honor, the mayor. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket Number 1474?
Docket Number 1474, Message in Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expend Raised Grant from the Federal Transit Administration. The city of Boston's award will not exceed $20 million in funding from the raised grant for the Roxbury-Wazillion Transportation Corridors Project, led by the Boston Transportation Department. The city will partner with local residents, community organizations, and consultants to apply for funds towards planning, designing, and construction improvements on Warren Street, Malcolm X Boulevard, and Malia Cass Boulevard in Roxbury.
Thank you. Docket Number 1474 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket Number 1475?
Docket Number 1475, Message in Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expend the Amount of $2 Million in the Form of a Grant for the Clarity Pool Project Awarded by the United States Department of the Treasury, Passed through the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, to be administered by the Public Facilities Department.
to be administered by the Public Facilities Department. The grant will fund the Clarity Pool Replacement and Bath House Renovation Project.
Thank you. Docket Number 1475 will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket Number 1476?
Docket Number 1476, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $62,149,000 in the form of a grant for the Fiscal Year 24 Port Security Grant, awarded by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund strengthened portwide risk management and protection of critical surface transportation infrastructure from acts of terrorism, major disasters, and other emergencies.
Thank you. Docket Number 1476 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. We are now on to reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket Number 1477?
Docket Number 1477, notice received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979, relative to action taken by the mayor and papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of September 18, 2024.
Thank you. Docket Number 1477 will be placed on file. We are now on to reports of committees. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket Number 1162?
Docket Number 1162, the Committee on Government Operations, which was referred on August 7, 2024. Docket Number 1162, message in order for your approval and order amending City of Boston Code ordinances, Chapter 15, Section 15-11.11 point 1, regarding Black Male Advancement for Equity and Welfare. Since its establishment in 2021, the Black Men and Boys Commission has sought to study the social conditions of the city's black men and boys, develop strategies to remedy or assist in remedying serious adversities, and recommend courses of action to create equal opportunity for generations of black men and boys in the City of Boston. submits a report recommending that the ordinance ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Gabriela Coletta Zapata. Counselor Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 1162 amends Chapter 15, Section 11 of the City of Boston Code ordinances by revising current language relevant to the Commission on Black Men and Boys, and adding language to codify the Office of Black Male Advancement. The proposed ordinance amends the Commission's duties with respect to collaboration, matters of the Commission's concern, and monthly meetings. The proposed ordinance includes language to ensure that the Commission's work will be in collaboration with other city departments and agencies, revises matters of the Commission's concern to include equity and racial justice, economic opportunity and worker empowerment, education and youth advancement, affordable housing, and pathways to homeownership, public health and wellness, fatherhood and families, community safety and returning citizens, financial empowerment, and more includes provisions to require the Commission to hold regular meetings following the first year of its existence. The proposed ordinance also adds a new section establishing the Office of Black Male Advancement and describing the Office's purpose, powers, and duties, and reporting requirements. The Office, under the charge of the Executive Director, will have the powers and duties necessary to fulfill the mission of the Commission. The Office will conduct research, collect data, and report on the progress of initiatives aimed at addressing the challenges faced by black men in the city. Some of the matters discussed at the working session include, well, first, let me talk about who was there. The following representatives from the Commission on Black Men and Boys and the Office of Black Male Advancement attended the working session. It was Frank Faro, who's the Executive Director, Tito Jackson, Chair of the Black Men and Boys Commission, Madhuri Good, Chief of Staff, and Brandon Miles, who is the Policy and Research Manager of the Office. During the working session, the chair reviewed legislative progression of the language of Docket 1162 as filed. Counselors expressed their support for passing this ordinance and officially codifying the office. Counselors and the invited representatives of the office discussed the annual report requirements, clarifying that the following passage of the ordinance and the annual report of the council received from the Commission will encompass a report from the office as described in the ordinance. Counselors also discussed the importance of considering compensation for the labor and time Commission members give to the Commission's work. With regard to the proposed ordinance, counselors discussed the potential for striking the current compensation provision and including one that would compensate Commission members. Counselors expressed support for reviewing compensation language relevant to the Reparations Task Force and the Human Rights Commission to potentially use as a model for compensation language to be included in this proposed ordinance. And so, there is an amendment to what was filed by the mayor, and I want to thank Madam President Louie Jen for bringing this forward. I want to thank Counselor Brian Orwell for his work, Counselor Santana. I believe Counselor Ingrid Peppen was there, Counselor Flynn was there, and of course, Counselor Julie Mejia, who was integral to the original passage of this ordinance. And then also give a shout out to Tito Jackson, who was the chair, who was involved in negotiations up until Monday morning. And so, the amendment, well, let me just read here. The original ordinance as filed was amended to include the following provision in a new draft under 15-11.2 Organization Clause E. The following provision provides potential compensation for Commission members in the form of a stipend to be determined by the mayor by striking the current language and inserting the following. The members of the Commission will receive stipends as determined by the mayor, commensurate with their duties and/or expenses. And so, as the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, I recommend moving the listed docket from the committee to the full council for discussion and formal action. At this time, my recommendation to the full counselor, counsel, is that this matter ought to pass in a new draft. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coletta Zapata. The chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez Anderson. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to say that I believe in the mission of the Office of Black Male Advancement and the Commission on Black Men and Boys. Since Counselor Mejia successfully passed the ordinance establishing the Commission, they got to work on unpacking some of the most pressing issues impacting black men and boys in our city. A demographic, as we know, that always seems to get the shortest end of the totem pole. Their mission is rooted in accountability and speaking truth to power, and so, in turn, I must do the same when it comes to the amended ordinance here. Not rising to stand in the way, but rather to just point something out that I feel like we need to do more work on. The existing ordinance states that the Commission on Black Men and Boys shall have the power to coordinate dialogues on a lot of different relevant issues, including concerns related to national origin, sexual orientation, and gender identity, mental, physical, and sexual health, violence prevention, employment, and more. The new ordinance uses the same language around coordinating dialogues and actions, but instead lists the topics to include equity and racial justice, economic opportunity, and worker department, education, and youth advancement, affordable housing, and pathways to homeownership, public health, and wellness, fatherhood and families, community safety and returning citizens, financial empowerment, and more. While this new list is exhaustive, pretty impressive, it continuously, it conspicuously leaves out the topics of relating to sexual orientation and gender identity. And, as I said, you know, of course, I am strongly in support of the Commission as well as the Office, but gay and trans men, boys, men and boys do exist. And when asked about this change, the proponents of the ordinance stated that the new draft codifies existing subcommittees within the Commission, and that gay and trans issues are under the Public Health Wellness Subcommittee. You see where I'm going with this. So LGBTQ plus, black men and boys also experience inequities in housing, education, workforce, and identity is super important when it comes to advocacy in all topics. So I think it's important to make room specifically to, one, destigmatize the stereotypes and all of the issues that we have, especially in the black community, especially amongst the black men. And, one, I think a population that I can't speak for, but as a mother of black sons, I can imagine that super difficult just to come out to family, and we have a long way to be able to talk about and support our black men and boys that are coming out or struggling to. So, of course, again, I will not be standing in the way of this ordinance moving forward, especially given the timeline that we're under, but now, especially since the portion of the code detailing the need to uplift black men, LGBTQ plus, black men and boys. I will be paying close attention and hopefully working with the Commission and the Office to have these conversations about how to be more inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez Anderson. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Counselor Coletta, for chairing this important hearing. I also wanted to recognize Counselor Mejia. If it wasn't for Counselor Mejia, there would not be a Commission. So I want to say thank you to Counselor Mejia, and also want to recognize Counselor Orwell and Representative Orwell. I do have the opportunity to attend some of the meetings, monthly meetings with both the counselor and with the representative. And I want to say thank you to the counsel for his leadership as well. Madam Chair, I listened closely to Counselor Coletta and to Counselor Fernandez Anderson, but I'm still not sure what the difference is between the amendment and what was proposed. Are we able to have a, can we kind of go over that again before we do take a vote on it, just so everyone is clear on exactly what the differences are and what the, and what impact it might have? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, through the chair, Counselor Coletta Zapata, if you'd like to elaborate more on those amendments and changes, you may.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the question. I want to also thank Counselor Fernandez Anderson for rising. I can get to that in just a few minutes after I address Counselor Flynn's question. So it is, it's one sentence, is the amendment to what was filed by the mayor, which did not include a provision or stipulation that members would be paid for their work. And what was brought up in the working session, as you may recall, is that folks who are giving their time and their energy and their resources, especially when we're talking about equity and making this a healthy and thriving city for everybody, is that when folks are asked to take time out of their day, and especially for a Commission like this, where there is a lot of work, and that was something that, you know, the Chair, Tito Daxton, had mentioned. I worked with him over, or on Monday morning and before then, to figure out what could we include in the language. And so, what was talked about are precedent-setting language that is already included in some of what's been filed. So Reparations Task Force had a good framework of maybe mirroring that language into this, and then also the Human Rights Commission. And so, ultimately, in the back and forth and speaking with the administration and the chair and with, you know, members of this body, the one amendment is the members of the Commission, and this is all in your committee report too, that's been filed on the agenda. The members of the Commission will receive stipends as determined by the mayor, commensurate with their duties and/or expenses. And that's typical language. We don't have executive power to say exactly how much, but that is something that the Chair of the Commission signaled his, his okay for. And so that's why this is the language that has been included. And then just to Counselor Fernandez Anderson's point, there was, we had been made aware of a discrepancy in the language that did not include language that specifically stated a subcommittee, or any subcommittee really, on gay, trans boys, and how we're helping them and giving them the support that they needed and the research that needs to happen at the City of Boston. And so, it will be a new subcommittee, and so what I was told by the chair is that they're casting a wider net, and it will be a subcommittee under the public health lens. And so, for them, they think that that will assist them in their work and be more inclusive, but they're casting a brighter, a broader net, and, but will intend to focus in on that work in addition to the other subtopics that I had mentioned in my committee report. So, I hope that's helpful. I'm happy to answer any more questions that you may have.
Thank you, Counselor Coletta Zapata. Counselor Flynn, would you like to?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Counselor Coletta. So, are you saying, or is the amendment saying that the subcommittee would not be part of this Commission and be part of the public health? So, would it still be part of this Commission?
Yes, that is what Counselor Coletta Zapata is signaling, yes. It's not, it's, it's part of, there's a sub, there's a Committee on Public Health on the Commission, and the issues that Counselor Fernandez Anderson raised with respect to LGBTQ plus and trans black men and boys will be under that Public Health Committee.
Okay. And, and the final, the final issue on stipend. So, are you proposing a stipend, Counselor Coletta, or is the mayor's office proposing a stipend?
Through the chair, Counselor Coletta Zapata, if you'd like to answer, you may.
In the spirit of, in the spirit of collaboration, the idea of a stipend came from this body, and that was in the working session, and that was under the discussion of making sure that folks that are using their time away from their families for this Commission should be compensated as a matter of equity, so.
Thank you, Counselor Coletta.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Santana. Counselor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselor Coletta Zapata for your leadership as Chair. Since its establishment in 2021, the Black Men and Boys Commission has been a pivotal in addressing the unique challenges faced by black men and boys in our city. The commitment to studying social conditions and recommending actionable strategies has been invaluable in our ongoing efforts to create equal opportunities. The committee's report emphasizes the importance of compensating Commission members for their dedication and contributions. This amendment ensures that members will receive stipends as determined by the mayor, reflecting the significant responsibilities they undertake. I believe this is a crucial step in recognizing the work of those who are deeply invested in advancing equity and welfare in our community. It acknowledges that the efforts to uplift and empower black men and boys require not only commitment, but also resources. I urge my colleagues to support this amendment and the overall goals of the Commission as we strive to create a more equitable Boston for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Santana. The chair recognizes Counselor Orwell. Counselor Orwell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and Chair Coletta, for hosting this working session. I'm in complete support of this ordinance that Counselor Mejia passed on this body, so thank you for your advocacy and your work alongside this. The Black Men's and Boys Commission and the Office of Black Male Advancement have done tremendous work in beginning to address the real challenges that black men and boys face in our city. Matter of fact, before I walked into this chamber, I just got off the phone with one of the Commission members, just talking about how to continue advancing that work in the city. And as a member, I see firsthand the value of compensating Commissioners for their tireless advocacy on key issues like education, housing, and economic inclusion. This ordinance is a critical step in reinforcing our commitment to equity and codifying departments like this so they can continue to have a lasting impact. By studying social conditions and developing strategies to address adversities, the Commission is shaping policies that will advance future generations. Their work matters, and this step will ensure that they are here to stay. And I just want to remind all my colleagues of the Commission meeting that's happening, actually tonight, at Vine Street at 6:00 PM. And I just want to thank all my council colleagues who have stopped in to the Commission meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Flynn, you've already spoken, but I will kindly let you speak again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I do support a stipend for the members, and I do see the work they do, and I think the work they do is invaluable. But just getting to Counselor Fernandez Anderson's point, I agree that there should be some language, explicit language, on LGBTQ-related support. So, if Counselor Fernandez Anderson made a good request, worthwhile request, is her request able to be part of the, part of the language?
Thank you. I will pass it to Counselor Coletta Zapata or Counselor Fernandez Anderson to comment. I understood Counselor Fernandez Anderson as making a comment, but not actually offering an amendment or a change to the text of the ordinance. Is that, am I understanding that correctly? I'll allow Counselor Coletta Zapata to speak, and then, if Counselor Fernandez Anderson would like, she may.
Thank you so much, again, for this important point. This was brought up, and our office spoke to, I saw Tito and asked him about this, and he was very clear that the, the language, even though it wasn't in here, would not preclude that this was a focus of the public, I just want to make sure I get it right, the Public Health and Wellness Subcommittee. And so, it does not, like I said, it casts a wider net, even though it does not say it specifically in the language, but they did mention that it was a priority, and this is coming directly from Tito Jackson, who is the chair. So, but I am not against putting more language in here that is specific to it. I think we're going to need a little bit more time. We can do a recess. I can get a refile of the committee report. I'm seeing heads shake and nod, so maybe that's something that we do. And again, this is the collaborative nature of this body, so I appreciate everybody. And I think, Madam President, if it makes sense, we can do a quick recess. We can edit this committee report and go from there.
Okay. Would anyone like to speak prior to there being a recess? The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. You have the floor.
That's exactly what my recommendation would be. That's exactly what my recommendation would be, is for us to take a brief recess to include Counsel Fernando Anderson, her important points that she made, and ensure that that language is part of the, the language that we're voting on. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I rise to just thank my colleagues because this is what democracy looks like, right? I think this is an opportunity for us to work as a collective and as a body, and sometimes these are the situations that we find ourselves in because the devil's is always in the details. And when we're passing laws, we have to be explicit about what it is that we are passing because everything can be left up to interpretation. And so I do appreciate the back and forth, and as the person who established this as an ordinance, I find myself in a space of making sure that if we're going to do this, we're going to do it as a body, and I look forward to the recess and figuring it out. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I can?
Yep, Counsel Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Okay, so just as, as a summary, so what would, what would be coming before you now as a body is an amended committee report for Section H, that including in all of the topic focus areas, equity and racial justice, economic opportunity and worker empowerment, education and youth advancement, affordable housing and pathways to homeownership, public health and wellness, including focusing in on LGBTQ and trans rights, fatherhood and families, community safety and returning citizens, financial empowerment, and more, and that's in subsection H.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I'm, I'll recognize Counselor Worrell, if you'd like to make a, okay, Counselor Worrell has a question?
Just a question for clarification, because part of the process, just to give everybody like a little bit background of how the committees were shaped, is the 21 commission members came together, decided on what subcommittees or committees that the commission wanted to focus on. So for each committee, there's one commission member leading that, that committee. So I was just wondering, you know, to, you know, Counsel Coletta or Counsel Fernando Anderson, are we creating a new committee or are we putting the committee underneath the Public Health Committee?
I'll allow, through the Chair, Counsel Coletta Zapata, if you'd like to answer.
Thank you for that question and that context. That's really, 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 really important. So that's the reason why, so it would be very hyper-specific, right, to the Public Health and Wellness Committee. And then what we were told is that an individual would lead the Subcommittee on LGBTQ Rights. And so that's why, in order to avoid the conversations that have already happened within the commission that you've been a part of, that Chair Jackson has relayed to us, I think, and what I'm hearing from the body is that they want to get really specific to include in the Public Health and Wellness Commission or Committee LGBTQ and trans rights. Does that, does that make sense? That would be my preference, and that would be the amended committee report that I'm, I would put in front of my, my colleagues for consideration.
Thank you. Counselor Coletta Zapata, about, oh, okay, the Chair recognizes Counsel Fernando Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I think, I get what you're saying. If we are not adding someone to lead a committee in the commission, then how does that get handled? So making a subcommittee would make sense because it wouldn't compromise the already existing structure. Okay. Yeah, I, I think that was the response, and I was okay with it. I was just making a comment saying that I was okay with it, and then working with them further to see in the future if a subcommittee is suffice, or do we need to then evolve it to something else? But yes, that's, that's, that's okay with me.
Okay. So there's a desire to amend? Yes. It's, the Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta Zapata?
Yes.
Okay, is someone putting forward a motion to amend?
I have the motion.
Okay, so there's a motion to amend, it's been seconded. We will amend the report. Counsel Coletta Zapata, Zapata, about how much time do you think you'll need to amend the report?
Five minutes.
Okay, we're in a brief recess until 1:05. We're back in session, and just to correct the record, I asked for a motion to amend, but actually because it's the Chair, it's just a substitution, and so substituted reports should be on everyone's desk. Madam Chair, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and I appreciate everyone's patience. So you should receive a new copy of the ordinance in its entirety, a clean version. I'm going to direct your attention to the second page, Section H, Clause 5, which is the Public Health and Wellness. So before, it just said Public Health and Wellness. And so what was transpiring, for those who are watching at home, we were trying to understand exactly what, what inclusive language we could include in this to make sure that it's fully encompassing and gets to the heart and spirit of what was brought up by my colleagues. And so we decided to utilize language that was in the 2021 ordinance, but also including LGBTQIA+ gender identity, sexual orientation, national origin, mental, physical, and sexual health. And so that is the, the change. I again want to thank my colleagues for their, their work on this. I want to thank Counselor Santana as well, who had alerted our office to this and, you know, had, had worked with us on this, and just thank everybody for being so intentional in their inclusivity. So that is the summary of the changes, and again, I'm just asking for a substitution of the committee report and passage in a new draft. Thanks.
Thank you, and thank you, Counsel Coletta Zapata, Zapata, for making these changes. Thank you to all of my colleagues for their notes and edits, and I know that you held a working session on this, and have been working a lot on this, so I want to just uplift you in the work that you did even before we got here today, Counsel Coletta Zapata. So Counselor Coletta Zapata seeks acceptance of this committee report in a new draft. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay? The ayes have it. This docket, docket number 1162, has passed in an amended draft.
That's substituted.
Has been, the substitute, the substitution has been accepted in a, in a new draft. There's been a doubt of the vote. Mr. Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 1162, Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta Zapata?
Yes.
Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin?
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernando Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernando Anderson, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louie Jean?
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mahia?
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel Murphy? Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Pippin?
Yes.
Counsel Pippin, yes. Counsel Santana?
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber?
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes. And Counsel Worrell?
Yes.
Counselor Worrell, yes. Docket number 1162 has received a unanimous vote on the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 1162 has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1335?
Docket number 1335, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on September 11th, 2024. Docket number 1335, Message and Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expend the Amount of $2,322,200 in the form of a grant for the Community Mitigation Grant awarded by the Massachusetts Gaming Commission, to be administered by Budget Management. The grant will fund offset, offset costs related to the construction and operation of a gaming establishment. Submits a report recommending that the grant ought to pass.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam President. On Thursday, September 26, 2024, the Committee on Ways and Means held a hearing to discuss docket number 1335 regarding the appropriation of funds to address the impacts of the Encore Casino on the surrounding, surrounding community. From the City Council, we had Counsel Coletta Zapata and Counsel Murphy in attendance for the hearing. We also received a letter of absent from Council President Louie Jean. The panel included representatives from various city departments, including Benit Gupta, Director of Policy and Planning from the Streets Cabinet, Yuki Wang, Director of Policy and Planning at the Office of Human Services, Maria Chivers, Director of Office of Research and Development at the Boston Police Department, Deputy Keith Webb of the Youth Violence Strike Force at BPD, Sergeant Detective Mark Sullivan of the Human Trafficking Unit at BPD, and Deputy Superintendent Joe Gillespie, BPD's Area A. Director Gupta explained that the Streets Cabinet will receive $1.6 million for street-related projects in Charleston. Of this, $655,000 will be used for road safety improvements near the Encore Casino, including key streets like Cambridge, Parker, and Medford. Another half a million will go towards safety improvement on Medford, Main, and Bunker Hill Streets, where, while $450,000 will fund early-stage designs for the Sullivan-Rutherford Avenue redesign to improve traffic safety and reduce congestion. Yuki Wang from the Office of Human Services shared that $177,000 has been allocated for participatory action research project to study the impact of casino gambling on Charlestown youth. This research will explore gambling exposure trends by race, age, and socioeconomic status in youth perceptions of Encore Boston Harbor. The goal is to identify risks and protective factors with six proposals for research partners currently under review. Representatives from BPD discussed that around $540,000 in funds allocated to address public safety concerns related to Encore Casino. This includes $71,900 for a full-time public safety program coordinated to track casino-related crime, and $40,700 for overtime costs and training for human trafficking unit detective. The BPD homicide unit's fatal collision accident investigation team will receive $45,900 for forensic mapping solutions and software. Additionally, $375,000 will support overtime equipment and public safety initiatives in BPD's Area 8, which has been, which has been impacted by increased traffic and motor vehicle thefts around the casino. As Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, I recommend that the docket ought to pass, and I would like to pass it off to Counsel Coletta Zapata for some remarks.
Thank you. Counselor Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and briefly, I was really proud to attend this hearing, and I want to thank the Chair for his professionalism. At that hearing, I advocated for the acceleration of this crucial, of these crucial infrastructure improvements, and I supported the preventative gambling education for youth in Charlestown. This fund and this mitigation money from the Massachusetts Gaming Commission will provide crucial safety improvements to Charlestown's infrastructure near Sullivan Square, Medford Street, and the Lost Village. And any of you have, that have walked along Sullivan Square know that you take your life into your own hands, just due to the fact that it is so dangerous there, and this has been something that the community has been asking for, for a very, very long time. And this money will help supplement the ongoing work in Sullivan Square and help address residents' growing concerns with pedestrian safety and vehicular collisions. In addition, I was also really pleased to see that there would be a study that ensures that our youth who live in close proximity to a casino understand the dangers of gambling and receive this preventative education and understand the financial risks and the social implications of gambling addiction. So just really grateful that this money's coming in and will be appropriated to this committee and ask my colleagues to consider voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta Zapata. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Counsel Worrell, Counsel Zapata. I did not attend this meeting. I should have been there. It was the first meeting I missed. But I, I do want to rise and let my colleagues know I am supporting this docket. I do want to put on the record that for many years, Encore has consistently transported a lot of my constituents from Charleston, from Chinatown to the, to the casino. And my neighborhood in Chinatown has a high rate of gambling-related issues. At times, I feel like my constituents are exploited by Encore. I also know Encore has bus transportation on surface, surface Parkway, Highway, and sometimes, or most of the time, bring residents for free to the casino, exploiting residents, many of them low-wage workers at restaurants. I would like to, for the record, ask the City of Boston Transportation Department if Encore does have an official license to park their vehicle in Chinatown several times a day, picking people up, dropping people off, and what payment are they paying Boston for that, for the right to park their bus on, on public property for an extended period of time? Additionally, that bus, that Encore bus is also putting fumes in the air, continuing to cause environmental challenges for the Chinatown neighborhood. As you probably can see, I'm frustrated with Encore, and I am looking for answers from the City of Boston and Encore on what exactly they are doing in Chinatown, and if this action that they've taken for many years is exploiting workers, and if they are exploiting workers, I want to know about it and have a hearing on it. In fact, I am calling for a hearing on this issue for next week. So I wanted to highlight some of those issues. Again, want to say thank you to the Chair for bringing this forward, but exploiting people in need, such as low-wage immigrant workers, bringing them, bringing them to Encore for free is probably one of the worst things I could imagine doing to somebody, but this is what Encore is doing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, the Chair. I command this, Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to the Chair for holding this meeting, and I do just want to rise, I did uplift concerns that I also see in Chinatown, that the, most of this mitigation money is going to Charlestown in needed traffic concerns, but it did list Charlestown in downtown Boston, but they assured me that it would be all of A-1, so Chinatown is included, and a lot of the traffic supports that are going to come out of this grant. And they also spoke to, which was important, that the casino-related crimes are not just related to the area right there, they're citywide, so that a lot of those supports, all the district councils, so you know that those supports will go citywide, not just be in the area near there. And the education piece is very important, which I spoke to at the hearing, making sure that, just like at a hearing last week, advocating for more financial literacy, the education around gambling, and especially in the neighborhood closest where young kids can walk to it, that that's important. But they did say that Chinatown was included in a lot of this support, but I appreciate that you want to make sure of that, because I do see those big buses, and I do see them parked on the sidewalk, and I see many of our residents in Chinatown being bused over there, so it's a concern of mine also. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Thank you. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means accepts the committee report and passage of docket number 1335. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay? Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1335 has passed. We are now on to matters recently heard. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0764?
Docket number 0764, order for a hearing to utilize former school and municipal buildings as affordable housing.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Braden, the Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Development. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a robust conversation about the order to utilize former school and municipal buildings as affordable housing. The administration was represented by Chief Sheila Dillon and Chief Dion Irish. They also had a panel of folks who work in the affordable housing space, nonprofit developers of affordable housing, and advocates, and they had a survey of potentially developable land around school buildings. And also, we talked about the process of surplusing city-owned property. It is quite a long process with a lot of due diligence so that property is disposed of responsibly. This is a very, very important issue that we will be continuing to look at and work on. At the present time, the BPS is in a process of probably reducing the number of school buildings, so this is an opportune moment to really have a thoroughgoing discussion on this matter. I think, given the unfolding plans of the BPS with regard to their school building program, we will continue to hold this docket in committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Braden, for hosting this hearing, and to my colleagues for attending. I also want to just thank the panelists, Rich Giadano from NYCDC, the professor who was here, Dariella Roger Brown from POA, really appreciate their insight as we continue to see if there's a way that we can strengthen our ability to use former municipal buildings. So thank you, Counselor Braden, for holding this hearing, and for my colleagues for being present on this important matter. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1201? Oh, okay. This docket shall remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1201?
Docket number 1201, ordinance preventing wage theft in the city of Boston.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, can we, can you read docket? We'll come back to docket number 1201. Can you please read docket number 1002?
Docket number 1002, order for a hearing to create a Boston Development Fund in the Planning Department.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Councilor Orrell. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. On Tuesday, October 1st, 2024, the Committee on Ways and Means held a hearing to discuss the creation of a Boston Development Fund within the Planning Department. At this hearing, we heard from key stakeholders, including Demon Cork, interim chief of planning, Kenzie Bach, administrator of the Boston Housing Authority, Ruben Kanter, senior policy analyst of the BPD, and Jim Grossman, founder and CEO of Rise. From the City Council, we had Council President Louis Jen, Council Peppin, Council Braden, Council Fitzgerald, Council Mejia, Council Durkin, Council Flynn, and Council Murphy, present for this hearing. We also received a letter of absence from Council Santana. The hearing focused on Boston stalled development projects with nearly 30,000 approved but unbuilt housing units, and only 3,000 of those units slated for homeownership. The proposal for the Boston Development Funds aims to utilize $150 million from the city's free cash balance to establish a revolving fund that would stimulate housing production. The fund is designed to support approved projects and offer flexible financial models to developers with an emphasis on increasing homeownership opportunities and reducing financial barriers to construction. A significant portion of the hearing focused on homeownership as a tool for wealth building and anti-displacement. Council members expressed concern that only about 10% of the unbuilt units are designated for homeownership. The proposed fund would incentivize condo development through targeted investments from the city and tax breaks for unsold units, thus helping to address the imbalance between rental and ownership opportunities. Moving forward, I look forward to working with the Council on a document that expresses its values for any development fund, whether it be this or the mayor's. It's a large appropriation that the City Council will be putting forward and voting on, so this effort would prioritize what I hope is homeownership and affordable housing solutions. The committee will also engage with developers and the community to ensure the fund meets Boston housing needs. As Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, I recommend that the docket will remain in committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Docket number 1002 will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, can you read docket number 1201?
Docket number 1201, ordinance preventing wage theft in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I apologize to my colleagues. I was out just for a quick second, but this docket, 1201, was sponsored by Council Weber, Mejia, and Peppin. We were joined by Council President Louis Jen, Peppin, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, and Braden. We had an administrative panel that included Trinh Nguyen from the Office of Worker Empowerment, Jody Sugarman-Brosen, who's the deputy chief of Worker Empowerment, Office of Labor Compliance and Worker Protections, and also Lou Mandarini, who's the senior advisor for labor within the office of the mayor. We also had an expert and union panel that included Terry Gerstein, founder and director of NYU Wagner Labor Initiative, Darlene Lombos from the Greater Boston Labor Council, Noel Xavier from the North Atlantic State Regional Council of Carpenters, Frank Murray from Local Seven Union Iron Workers, who's the president, and Shetan Green from the Greater Boston Building Trades Union. There was an emphasis that we need to prevent city contracts and licenses from being awarded to violators of wage laws. We highlighted the impact of wage theft on immigrants and undocumented workers and stressed the importance of holding employers accountable, ensuring workers are paid fairly. We also focused on the impact of wage theft on restaurant workers and immigrant communities. We emphasized the duty to protect employees from predatory practices and the need for effective tools and enforcement mechanisms. We highlighted the power disparity and the vulnerability of undocumented workers to exploitation. The administration panel provided an overview of wage theft issues in Boston, citing data from the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office and the United States Department of Labor. We discussed the importance of education and the role of unions in protecting workers' rights. We highlighted the need for clear legal authority and effective enforcement mechanisms, and we reviewed the existing enforcement mechanisms, including wage theft prevention, standard contract terms, and the role of the Office of Labor Compliance and Worker Protections. We discussed the need for comprehensive database and just how important due it is into creating some of the databases that we intend to use to track wage theft violations and ensure effective enforcement. We also discussed the importance of creating public disclosure resources, such as the database of violators, to increase transparency and accountability, especially during the procurement process. We also discussed enforcement retaliation. It was a really great discussion. I think next steps, before I pass it over potentially to the lead sponsor for any remarks he may have. The next steps is certainly a working session that will be scheduled to further discuss and refine the ordinance and incorporate feedback from the meeting. Again, we intend to focus on establishing clear legal authority and directives for government actors, creating a comprehensive database, and ensuring effective enforcement mechanisms moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coletta Zapata. The Chair recognizes Counselor Weber. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and just my thank you to the Chair, Gabriela Coletta Zapata, for running a great hearing and for my colleagues who showed up. I think, as Darlene Lombos pointed out, this is an effort that began more than 10 years ago, which led to Mayor Marty Walsh entering an executive order to stop, you know, city contracts and licenses going out to businesses that don't pay their workers properly. And I think the hearing highlighted how we can really make a difference in how the city of Boston does business, and we can make sure that we protect workers here in the city and allow honest businesses to thrive. And I look forward to continuing to working with you all on getting the ordinance across the finish line. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Weber. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the Chair for conducting an informative hearing. I also want to recognize and thank my community in Chinatown for the work they are doing on this issue, including in Chinatown Residents Association and CPA as well, but they play a critical role in working with residents who feel exploited, especially residents living in Chinatown that are working in the restaurants, oftentimes low-wage workers. I wanted to highlight what happens in Boston, Boston restaurants, or what happens in Chelsea restaurants or Cambridge restaurants also has an impact on Boston. Many of the restaurants are also owned by the same people or the same companies, so I want to make sure that when a worker does work, that they are getting their fair pay for a fair day's work. This is an issue I've worked on for almost eight years now. I also wanted to recognize the city of Boston for including in establishing a program called Know Your Rights. And I've been to a few of these workshops. They invite a lot of immigrant workers and low-wage workers, oftentimes having these discussions in languages other than English. The ones I went to included Spanish and Cantonese. But it's a tremendous opportunity for low-wage workers and immigrant workers to come to some of these workshops and talk to a lawyer, talk to some city official, or talk to Community Labor United, for example, so these workers know what their rights are. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
I think this comment is for after Counselor Mejia's. I just wanted to say that I recommend this docket remaining committee.
Okay, thank you. This docket, docket number 1201, shall remain in committee. We are now on to matters recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1430?
Docket number 1430, message in order for your approval and order authorizing the city of Boston to appropriate the amount of $2,225,000 for the purpose of paying the cost of a feasibility study and schematic design associated with a project for the Pauline Agassi Shaw Charles H. Taylor Elementary School in Matapan, Mass. 02126. This includes the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto and for which the city of Boston may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, said amount to be expended under the direction of the Public Facilities Department on behalf of the Boston Public Schools.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Orrell. Counselor Orrell, the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Ways and Means held a hearing on Tuesday, October 1st, 2024 to discuss the MSBA grant for the Shaw Taylor Elementary School in Matapan. We all know by now that Council President Louis Jen went to the Taylor.
Where'd I go? The Taylor?
For this hearing, testifying on behalf of the administration were Brian McLaughlin, Senior Project Manager, Carlton Jones, Director of Public Facilities, and Dell Stanislaw, Chief of Capital Planning at Boston Public Schools. From the City Council, we had Councils Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, and Council President Louis Jen, present for this hearing. Mr. McLaughlin provided an overview of the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which funds public school capital projects. He highlighted that Boston has collaborated on 35 accelerated repair program projects and is currently reviewing eight more. The Shaw Taylor School entered the core program in December 2023, and after a 270-day eligibility period ending in March 2025, the project will move into a capital pipeline with consultant selection by summer 2025, and a feasibility study started in fall 2025. Chief Stanislaw explained the Shaw Taylor School merger, which began this school year, combining grades pre-K 1 at the Shaw Building and grades 2 to 6 at the Taylor Building. Extensive community engagement has taken place within 10 community meetings and seven merger planning sessions. Over the summer, the facilities team performed light renovations and merged the school now serves as a community hub with additional staff to support holistic wraparound services. As Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, I recommend moving the docket to the full council and further action with a recommendation that it ought to be read for the first time and assigned for further action.
Thank you, Counselor Orrell. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means recommends docket number 1430 be read for the, oh, would you like to speak on this matter, Counselor Flynn?
Yes, Madam Chair. I just want to highlight and thank the Counselor for chairing this important meeting. Mass School Building Authority is a critical player in providing needed financial services to BPS. Just recently, Josiah Quincy School opened for the support of the Mass School Building Authority, so want to thank State Treasurer Deb Goldberg and her team at MSBA. Also, the Carter School in Roxbury, which I think is probably the best school in the city that helps students with disabilities. They're actually building a therapeutic pool so children with special needs are able to get the critical exercise they need and deserve, and that's through the MSBA program as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I too want to say thank you to the MSBA, the way that you highlighted and uplifted Counselor Flynn, and Counselor Orrell mentioned how much, right now, we know that I went to the Taylor. I spent seven years there. I've spent seven years nowhere else, and so the Taylor holds a very special place for me and my family. It's where my father really got engaged in his own civic activism, where all of my siblings went to school, where my niece graduated from two years ago. It's just, it's literally another home for us. So I'm very happy that we are discussing this before the council and before this body, and I am elated, you know, when we were at the Josiah Quincy, a number of us were there for the ribbon cutting a few weeks ago to see MSBA using funds like this to make sure that our kids are getting buildings that affirm their dignity at the Taylor in Matapan, at the Josiah Quincy in Chinatown, and in every neighborhood in the city. And so I'm excited for what the future of the Taylor will be, and I know that you share the Taylor and the PA Shaw. I believe that's count both you, or they're both in your district. I think that, well, anyways, that they're both important community assets as we continue to have this conversation around mergers. So thank you, Counselor Orrell, for hosting this hearing. We are going to, the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means recommends docket number 1430 be read for the first time and be assigned for further action. Mr. Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 1430. Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta Zapata. Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin. Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louis Jen. Counsel Louis Jen, yes. Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Peppin. Counsel Peppin, yes. Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Orrell. Counsel Orrell, yes. Docket number 1430 has received its first reading and is assigned for further action.
Thank you. Having received its first reading in the affirmative, docket number 1430 will be assigned for further action. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1392?
Docket number 1392, to order for a hearing to provide additional support and informational sessions on the distribution of Boston's new 225 liquor licenses.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Orrell, the Chair on Small Business and Professional Licensure. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. On Tuesday, October 1st, 2024, the Committee on Small Business and Professional Licensure held a hearing to discuss Boston's historic allocation of 225 new liquor licenses. From the administration, we had Chief Uduwu, Chief of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion for the City of Boston, Kathleen Joyce, Chairwoman of the Boston Licensing Board, Emily Patrick from the Small Business Administration, and Nick Korn, Managing Partner at Offsite. Representing the council, we had Council President Louis Jen, Counsel Mejia, Counsel Braden, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Weber, and Counsel Fitzgerald. During the hearing, we raised concerns about the accessibility of the application process, especially for restaurant owners facing language barriers or those lacking access to digital channels like email or social media. Many small business owners in underrepresented areas may not be fully aware of these opportunities, and it's our responsibility to ensure they are informed and supported. The administration offered a desire for a door-knocking campaign, gave insight into why these use the ABCC standard application for licenses, outlined a step-by-step guide for issuing licenses, expressed a desire to meet with civic groups and attend district-level meetings with counselors. In order to be eligible for the first round of licenses, you must apply by December 6. I know the application can be drawn-out process, so that's a date that needs to be widely circulated. So basically, what we were discussing in this hearing was trying to create a cocktail of success. As Chair of the Committee on Small Business and Professional Licensure, I recommend that this docket remain in committee for further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Counselor Orrell. That cocktail of success line, it's a good line, isn't it? Want to shout out my Director of Policy, Jesse Purvis, for that line. Thank you. Docket number 1392 will remain in committee. We're now on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1478?
Docket number 1478, Councilors Weber and Peppin offer the following: ordinance to protect workers from heat-related illness and injury.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to begin by asking that we suspend the rules and add Counselor Santana as a third sponsor.
Counsel Weber seeks suspension of the rules to add Counselor Santana as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no other. Seeing and hearing no objections, Council Santana is so added. Council Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you. This ordinance is a follow-up from a hearing Council Pepe and I held in my committee in July on how to protect workers in Boston from heat-related illnesses. And since then, my office and Council Pepe's office have worked on the language of an ordinance. We spoke to Senator Becca Roush, who has put forward a similar ordinance on a state level, and I thank her office for helping us, you know, refine our proposal. The proposal would require trainings to identify signs of heat-related illness for employers who have city contracts and afford workers protections when there's heat advisories and heat emergencies. It also imposes fines for employers who deny workers shade, rest, and water, and that mirrors an ordinance that is currently in force in Phoenix. I look forward to working on this ordinance in the Government Operations Committee and working with my colleagues on this important issue. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Pepe. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to start off by thanking Councilor Weber and his team for working with my team on this ordinance. After we had the hearing, Councilor Weber and I had the opportunity to visit one of the district yards in his district and be able to see firsthand what it was like for the working conditions of our public works employees on a very hot day. And this is though, this is what many of our employees face, not just those that work for the city, but that work in the city in general. And we were able to learn in the hearing that Boston by 2050 is going to experience 40 more days, 40 more days of temperature that's above 80 degrees in the city of Boston. And that's, I know that we may not be known as the warmest city in the country, but it just shows that global warming is real and that we have to make sure that we are taking the right steps to make sure that our workers have the protection that they require when they are out in extreme heat working conditions. So that's why I'm excited to continue to work on this with my colleague and hopefully get the support from our, from the rest of the councilors. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Santana. Council Santana, you have the floor, and bless you.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to my, to Councilor Weber and Pepe for filing this report here in order and for including me as an original co-sponsor. This ordinance is aimed at protecting workers from heat-related illness and injury, and as we've heard from my colleagues, this issue is not just about safety, it's about dignity and the right to work in an environment that prioritizes health. The rising temperatures we experience due to climate change present an urgent challenge, particularly for those in outdoor and labor-intensive jobs. This ordinance underscores our commitment to safeguarding our workforce, especially the most vulnerable among us, by establishing clear guidelines of protections against heat-related risks. We are taking a proactive step to ensure that no worker has to choose between their livelihood and their health. I am proud to stand alongside my colleagues as we push for measures that reflect our values of equity and care. This ordinance is an essential tool for us fostering a safer work environment and demonstrating that we prioritize the well-being of all of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clark, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Worrall, and myself. Docket number 1478 shall be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clark, would you please read docket number 1479?
Docket number 1479, Councilors Durkin and Santana offer the following: order for a hearing to investigate the use, impact, and potential ban of algorithmic price setting in the Boston rental housing market.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Durkin. Council Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I'd like to suspend the rules and add Councilor Liz Braden to this filing.
Thank you. Councilor Durkin seeks to suspend the rules and add Councilor Braden as a third original co-sponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Council Braden is so added.
Thank you so much, Chair. I rise today to introduce a hearing on a matter that directly impacts the affordability and fairness of our city's housing market. Along with Councilor Santana and Braden, I'm calling for a hearing to investigate the use and impacts of algorithmic software price setting in the Boston rental market. As we know, Boston grapples with a housing shortage. Housing affordability is the top, if not most salient, issue for our residents. Rents have risen rapidly over the last few years, and the share of rent burden households in our city far exceeds the national average. While there are many factors contributing to the crisis, we must scrutinize every practice that could artificially inflate rents and exacerbate the problem. Recently, the U.S. Department of Justice, along with eight state AGs, filed an antitrust lawsuit against RealPage, a leading maker of rental algorithmic price-setting software. This lawsuit alleges that RealPage practices violate antitrust laws by fostering collusion among landlords and replacing fair competition with collective pricing strategies that lead to inflated rents. 5.3% of the total rental units in Massachusetts are priced using two software products that are similar to this. And let me be clear about what this means. These algorithms use non-public data from competing landlords to generate rent recommendations. They guide property owners to artificially inflate rents by limiting competition. In some cases, they even suggest maintaining vacancies rather than reducing rent prices. This is not the free market at work. It's a coordinated effort to maximize profits at the expense of Boston residents. RealPage executives have referred to their products as driving every possible opportunity to increase price and avoiding the race to the bottom in down markets. One executive even admitted that their system helps landlords avoid competing on merit. Just this past summer, San Francisco passed a city ordinance banning the use of algorithmic pricing software that uses privileged, non-public information to set rents. We have the responsibility to protect our residents from predatory practices that make housing less affordable and less accessible. That's why we're calling for a hearing, to assess the use and impact of these algorithmic tools in Boston's rental market and to investigate the potential for an ordinance banning their use. This is serious. We need to understand how widespread these practices are in our city. We need to hear from renters how they may have been impacted, and we need to explore every option to ensure that our housing market operates fairly and transparently. The City of Boston has a vested interest in maintaining affordable and stable housing for its residents. Landlords using software that relies upon and aggregates non-public information to collude runs counter to this interest and threatens the well-being of our residents. I urge my fellow counselors to support this hearing and join us in taking a stand against practices that undermine fair competition and affordability. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Santana. Council Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you so much, Councilor Durkin, for leading on this important initiative and leading on housing as well. Today, we are addressing a critical issue facing our city, the impact of algorithmic price setting in Boston rental housing market. Excuse me. As we know, Boston is grappling with a tight housing market, and the rate of rent burden household is alarmingly high. The emergence of revenue management software, often referred to as algorithmic devices, has transformed how rental prices are set. While these tools may seem efficient on the surface, they can reduce competition and contribute to skyrocketing rents that are already pushing many families to the brink. The recent lawsuit filed by the U.S. Department of Justice against RealPage highlights the dangers associated with these algorithms. These allegations point to practices that facilitate collusion among landlords undermining the competitive landscape that is essential for fair pricing. Instead of allowing market forces to dictate rental rates, these systems leverage non-public data to manipulate prices, often leading to inflated rents that further pushes our housing crisis. It is imperative that we take a closer look at how these tools operate and their effects on our community. By investigating the use and potential ban of algorithmic price setting, we are prioritizing the needs of our residents, ensuring that everyone has access to affordable and stable housing. Today, I urge my colleagues to support this hearing order and to commit to the understanding that these implications of these technologies and exploring all the avenues to protect our residents from unfair pricing practices. We have a responsibility to foster a rental market that works for everyone, not just select few. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Braden. Council Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Council Durkin and Council Santana for including me in this hearing order. I don't want to repeat all that has been already said about this matter. This is not how the market is supposed to work. This is predatory manipulation of rents, and it is unethical and unfair in a housing market which is one of the most expensive in the country. The fact that this algorithmic instrument is used to encourage landlords to actually withhold putting apartments on the market and creating an artificial shortage of apartments so that they can actually justify increasing rents is really, really, really very bad, very highly unethical. Alston Brighton has such high rates of renters, we probably have about 80% of our population in Alston Brighton are renters, and this neighborhood will be disproportionately impacted by these predatory and illegal behaviors. The rental market is really tough enough at this point, and we can't have companies using illegal price fixing to make things even harder for our residents across the city, but also in Alston Brighton. So I really look forward to diving into this conversation. I know at the state level, last month Senators Warren and Markey and Congressman Moulton sent a letter to 13 of the state's largest apartment owners questioning their purported use of this software. So I'd really encourage everyone to get, see if we can do a deep dive into the details of this and really send a clear signal that we will not, that we don't approve of this predatory practice and that we will try and eliminate it in the City of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. I also want to just say that thank you to the makers for filing this. It's incredibly important that we get ahead of the capabilities of these technologies, and really, at the end of the day, it's discrimination. And so it's important for us to look into them, to see what we can do to regulate them. My office has actually been having conversations with the ACLU about the capability of this similar technology and how they discriminate, particularly against Black and Brown folks. So looking forward to this hearing order and to further conversations on this matter. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clark, please add Councilors Coletta Zapata, Fitzgerald, Pepe, Weber, Worrall. Please have the chair. Docket number 1479 will be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Mr. Clark, please read docket number 1480.
Docket number 1480, Councilors Louie Jen and Coletta Zapata offer the following: order for a hearing regarding the City of Boston's response to sexual assault, domestic violence, and related resources for survivors.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council President Louie Jen. Council President Louie Jen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councilor, Mr. Chair. Can I request to suspend the rules and add Council Durkin as a third original co-sponsor?
Council President Louie Jen looks to suspend the rule to add Council Durkin as an original co-sponsor. Seeing no objection, Council Durkin is added as original co-sponsor.
Thank you. To my colleagues and to those watching, this hearing order covers topics of sexual assault, domestic violence, and related topics that may be distressing, so please take care if that is the case. While sexual assault and domestic violence are distinct, they are often interwoven in their impact on survivors. Sexual assault refers specifically to non-consensual sexual acts, while domestic violence encompasses a broader range of abusive behaviors that may or may not include sexual violence, a larger umbrella of intimate partner violence. What binds these issues together is the exertion of power and control over the victim. Both crimes are about domination and both leave lasting emotional and psychological scars on the individual and the community. One of the most troubling aspects of both sexual assault and domestic violence is that these crimes are most often committed by someone the victim knows. I want to again shout out Shakira from Shakira Story Domestic Violence and Coaching and Consulting for the work that she does using her personal pain to really lead on these issues. The common misconception is that rape is frequently carried out by a stranger lurking in the shadows. In reality, eight out of 10 rapes are perpetrated by an acquaintance, intimate partner, or family member. Similarly, domestic violence occurs in intimate relationships, often with those who are meant to protect and love the victim. Both crimes are vastly underreported, and I want to shout out to all of my colleagues on the council who have done work on making sure that we are, whether it's contaminated drinks or rape kits, that we are doing what we can to address these issues. Survivors often fear retaliation, face shame, or worry that they will not be believed. These fears are magnified when they perpetrate it to someone they know, love, or rely on. It's crucial that we, the city, develop and support policies that provide support and resources to the victims. Shout out to the Boston Public Health Commission. I know that they're doing, they're beginning to ramp up their work on this issue, so I think that it would be good to have a hearing and to hear from community activists and members about what more we can be doing as a city. We have to reduce barriers to reporting these crimes and ensure that survivors have access to the trauma-informed care they need to begin healing. Whether they are survivors of sexual assault, domestic violence, or both, we have to stand in offering them just the support and hope. And I have some resources that I'd love to share, but before I do that, I'd love to just turn it over to my co-sponsors and anyone else who'd like to speak on the matter.
Thank you, Council President. The Chair recognizes Council Coletta Zapata. Council Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you, Vice President. Sexual violence and domestic violence knows no bounds. It doesn't discriminate on gender, race, or socioeconomic status. I am grateful for the incredible work of organizations like the one we honored here today and others like the Boston Area Rape Crisis Center that support survivors and work towards a future that is free of domestic violence and sexual assault. This issue is deeply personal to me and many that you know. Recently, I've worked with Bark and BPD to eliminate conditions that proliferate the threat of contaminated drinks and subsequent court instances of sexual violence. We were able to ensure a detective was allocated to every case recorded, but more work has to be done to ensure a kit and a professional is present in all emergency rooms. I recently testified at the State House in support of Senator Paul Feeney's bill that helps address some of these issues. This hearing is a way to obtain the necessary information from law enforcement, advocacy organizations, and healthcare professionals and survivors to make sure we are giving them the resources and the support that they need. Generally, if folks are listening in and you are a survivor, I want to remind you that we stand in solidarity. And in your journey, as you reclaim your power against your abusers, just know that you are worthy of dignity, peace, and joy. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Coletta Zapata. Council Flynn, you now have the floor. Sorry, I didn't see Council Durkin. She's original co-sponsor. Council Durkin, you now have the floor.
Thank you so much, Chair, and thank you so much to Council President Louie Jen and Councilor Coletta Zapata for working on this particular issue. I remember when I heard that Councilor Coletta Zapata was working on reducing and preventing drugging and spiking of drinks when I was not yet a counselor, and I remember thinking, wow, there's someone who's speaking for me in my own personal experience. Thank you for your leadership. This is particularly important for me. I remember in 2011, Ayanna Pressley bravely spoke about her experience, telling Bostonians that she was a survivor, and I remember the ripple effect that had for folks who had never been able to speak their true experience. As the city councilor that touches 14 colleges and universities in District 8, I know this is personal for my constituents, too. As someone who has experienced sexual violence and as someone who has experienced drugging and things of the like, I really appreciate that we are centering survivors here, and it's something that I didn't feel open to speaking about until this morning, and I just thought about how powerful it was when I saw someone working on an issue that I had experienced and when I saw folks who truly understood what I had been through speaking on the council floor, and now I have that power, too, as a counselor. And I'm grateful to now Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley for her openness, and I'm grateful to all the women that have come before us and the women who stand on this council who have spoken to their own personal experiences. Boston prides itself as being a progressive, compassionate city, but when I woke up on the floor of my entryway, not remembering what happened the night before, over five years ago, I didn't feel that. I didn't feel that anyone represented me, and I remember I didn't call the police, I didn't file a report, I did not feel comfortable doing so. And I remember telling a police officer a couple years later, and even a couple years later, getting 12, 15 questions about where it was, how it happened, who I was with, who I thought did it. It was traumatizing, and it's honestly traumatizing to talk about it now. So today, we have the opportunity to center survivors. We have the opportunity... the opportunity to center the resources that they need, and I'm absolutely dedicated to that. As someone who's experienced it, as someone who's lived it, as someone who, as a councillor, people have come to me and shared their experiences, we have a real opportunity to think of what's possible, and I'm just grateful to my colleagues for all that they've poured into this, and we have more work to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Durkin. Councilor Flynn, Council Fitzgerald, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Vice Chair Worrell. Council Durkin, thank you so much for that emotional testimony, and I'm so sorry that you had to go through that. As a father of a daughter myself, I hope to have these services in place so that one day, you know, our hope is that this thing never occurs to anybody. But for folks who have gone through it themselves, to have those services in place and to make sure they are supported in the future, it's important to make sure that we put those folks in the right place for them to express and get the support they need. So just really coming from a father of a daughter to make sure that this is okay, as I know Council Durkin's father probably feels the same, and I wouldn't want to wish that on anybody. So, thank you, Council Durkin.
Thank you, Council Fitzgerald. Is anyone looking else to speak to this? Council Mahia? Council Mahia, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to rise and thank the makers, and I also just wanted to extend my love to you. As a mother who is raising a little girl here in the city of Boston, I know how important this is and how important it is for us to get this right. So I just want to thank you. And I also just want to uplift that, especially for teens. I know we're talking about, and I know you've done a lot of work, Council Coletta, around bars and things of that nature, but I also think that sexual assault is also happening in our Boston public schools, and we have an opportunity to work collaboratively in that space as well. And so I just wanted to extend, raise my hand up and say that whatever I can do to help support this work. Council Louie Jean, I'd love to be a part of this effort, and so, thank you.
Is it? Counselor Fenner Anderson, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the makers for filing this. So most of you know that I used to be a behavioral health in-home therapist, and I had a client in particular, and I just wanted to uplift her because she, so she was on a spectrum and her family had already been through like so much trauma. I think she was one of the four children, but the only survivor from a fire. And so she was well-loved and protected and supported, but couldn't properly communicate what had happened to her in a BPS school, raw daylight, in the middle of, you know, school time. And so I just remember us not knowing what had actually taken place and me working with her through just, you know, life skills, you know, it could be cooking with her, it could be just washing the dishes with her, and out of nowhere, she disclosed. So you never know who is going through these horrible traumas and how anything can trigger it at any moment. So I think the makers and Councilor Durkin, thank you so much for your bravery today. I had no idea, and just listening to you here today, and for us to be a body where we can all hear you and be supportive to you, I hope to be able to continue conversations in the council where we can continue to fight against this horrible thing. And agreeing with the lead sponsor, because this was like a specialty of mine, there's so much information and data that people, misconceptions that people don't get about this. So psychologically, rape is ninety-five percent mostly based on power and control, and that includes, you know, sadism and all of these other types of issues, but not sexual starvation. And I think the misconception is that this is, you know, the victims, what did a victim do? And typically, the major thing that victims live with is the guilt of feeling like they could have done something different to not be victimized in that moment. So thank you so much for filing, Council Louie Jean and your co-sponsors, and Councilor Durkin, we are here, and I send myself as a friend if you should need me. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Fenner Anderson. Council Durkin, thank you for your courage. Also, just thank you for putting yourself in a position to make sure that this does not happen to others. And thank you to Council President Louie Jean, Council Coletta Zapata, for all your work in this space to making sure that individuals are getting the resources or drafting policy or bringing to attention areas on how we can be supportive on preventing sexual assault, domestic violence from happening here in the city of Boston. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Anyone looking to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Council Brayden, Council Fenner Anderson, Council Fitzgerald, Council Flynn, Council Mahia, Council Murphy, Council Peppin, Council Santana, Council Weber, please add the chair. Docket number 1480 will refer to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket numbers, docket number 1481?
Docket number 1481, Council Louie Jean offer the following: Resolution recognizing October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council President Louie Jean. Councilor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor, Mr. Chair. I'd like to add Council Mahia as an original co-sponsor.
Council President Louie Jean looks to add Council Mahia as an original co-sponsor.
Awesome. Thank you. And again, we honored Shakira Robinson, Domestic Violence Coaching and Consulting today because today is October 2nd, and October is Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. And it is, in the same way that we recognized last month as Suicide Awareness Month, these are issues that are extremely difficult to talk about, right? There's a lot of societal shame around these issues that we need to really work out, work against. And so we need to create space here, as Council Durkin said, when we share our own personal stories, but also knowing that in these halls of power that we are thinking about those who are often left without voice and without help. I've shared in other settings about how this issue affected me as a young person intervening in the lives of loved ones, and it's really, really hard to get people out of domestic violence situations. It's incredibly difficult for a number of reasons. And so I just wanted to take time and space here to honor those who feel trapped in really difficult situations and let people know that there's help out there. One in three women at some point in their lifetime experience domestic violence. One in four experience severe physical violence. Forty-four percent of lesbian women experience violence by an intimate partner in their lifetime. One in four gay men and one in three bisexual men experience intimate partner violence. It's incredibly important that we speak up and speak out about these issues. And so I also just wanted to share some resources. Safe Link is Massachusetts statewide, twenty-four seven toll-free domestic violence hotline, and a resource for anyone affected by domestic, intimate, or dating violence. Their toll-free number is eight-seven-seven-seven-eight-five-two-zero-two-zero. People who are deaf and hard of hearing can reach Safe Link through Mass Relay Service by dialing seven-one-one. There's a twenty-four hour multilingual hotline, that's six-one-seven-three-three-eight-two-three-five-five. And I believe Council Coletta Zapata mentioned some of the organizations already, but there's the Asian Task Force Against Domestic Violence, there's CASAMIRNA, there's Elizabeth Stone House, there's the Boston Area Rape Crisis Center. There are so many organizations that are here to help folks. And I'll just give the number for the Boston Area Rape Crisis Center. That number is one-eight-hundred-eight-four-one-eight-three-seven-one. So I just want to continue like I did last year. We recognize this as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, but I wanted to make sure that this year that we worked also on how are we helping people who are in these situations. When I had to do it in my young twenties, I actually was overwhelmed and had no idea where to go and how to help. And it was really, really difficult. And so I want us, for people, even if it's one victim or two victims or just a few people who hear us having a hearing, talking about the resources, talking alongside Boston Public Health Commission about how we can help folks who are in these situations, I think that's well worth it. So thank you for, again, recognizing this as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and look forward to the work that we can do as a body on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Mahia. Council Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Madam President for inviting me to join you on this resolution. I just want to just uplift a few things. One is that oftentimes when we hear domestic violence, the notion is that it's happening in the home. And so I want for those who are tuning in is that you don't have to live with your partner to be a victim of violence, and violence is not just physical, it's emotional, financial, it's a number of different things, and it shows up very different. And so it's really important for people to recognize those signs. I think what I have seen is that it is really hard to get out of a bad relationship because oftentimes you don't, you don't, you can't determine whether that's really love or if that's just power and control. And I think that as we have these conversations, it's really important for us to uplift that violence in any kind of form, domestic violence, dating violence, financial violence, although those things fall within the scope of what this, we're here to do today. And I also want to just uplift, again, Shakira, who, what we have seen is that especially during COVID, we saw an uptick on domestic violence issues that were happening because people didn't know how to be with each other. You know, we spent all of our times at work, but because of COVID, we were forced to be with each other. And what we saw and what we learned during that process, or at least what we heard, was that the uptick in violence was seen at a height during COVID. And I think that that is something to uplift and to acknowledge. And I remember Shakira and I working collaboratively on trying to find people rapid housing or getting them out of a bad situation. And so that the amount of time and energy that it takes, even when you get a call at eleven o'clock at night, is the work that she does. And so I just want to uplift her again for her leadership in the space and her vulnerability of sharing our own story and journey. And then lastly, I'll just say that, you know, this past weekend, we hosted an event for men in particular to really look at anger management. I think that that's also an issue, well, not just for men, I think everybody got anger management issues, but I think it's really important for us to acknowledge, especially in the Latino community, the issues of machismo and how it shows up in certain spaces and places that you want to keep your women in check. And I think that there's a lot of work to be done in the Latino community around some of these machismo issues that have been bubbling up to the top. And I think we have an opportunity to really address it because at the end of the day, we are now living in America and we are free. And I think some men have a hard time understanding that when they come from other countries. And so there's a lot of work to be done here from a cultural competency space, and I look forward to working alongside my colleagues to do just that. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn. Councilor, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Worrell. And I rise to support this resolution. It's an important resolution. This is an issue I have worked on for many years on the city council. It's important that we work together to provide the resources and support to survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault. I just wanted to highlight, we had a number of city council hearings that I worked on going back to 2018, 2019, 2021 with then-city council president, now Attorney General Andrea Campbell. We worked closely with a number of organizations, including the Asian Task Force Against Domestic Violence, and I know that they have their annual reception coming up, as well as CASAMIRNA, to try to continue the work and support. I wanted to acknowledge the work my mother has done on this issue as the first lady of Boston. On October 28, 2019, myself and City Council Campbell, we held a hearing on this issue at Northeastern University School of Law Domestic Violence Institute. We looked at data compiled by Jane Doe, Mass Department of Public Health, and the 2010 National Intimate Partner Survey that indicates Massachusetts was in power with national averages as it relates to this critical issue that continues to rise. We also know that the City of Boston Public Health Commission now has a standalone group that is designated to specifically work on domestic violence-related issues. I want to acknowledge Dr. Ochukwu for working to establish that. At that hearing I had with Council President Campbell at the time, we discussed ways to provide support for survivors, solutions for increasing reporting opportunities, such as our immigrant and LGBTQ communities, as well as other ways to educate the public about this issue in an effort to reduce domestic violence and sexual assault in Boston. I'm going to continue to work on this issue, and I know last year I tried to work to establish a standalone committee on domestic violence and sexual assault. Last year, I highlighted data compiled by the National Center for Injury Prevention and Control. Thirty-four percent of Massachusetts women, thirty-one percent of Massachusetts men experience physical violence, sexual violence, and stalking by their intimate partners. It's also a major problem in high school, as some of my colleagues mentioned, including Boston Public School System. According to the National Domestic Violence Hotline, the presence of a gun in domestic violence situation increases the risk of homicide for a woman by five hundred percent. More than half of women killed by gun violence are killed by family members or intimate partners. In my district, District Tewas is also a significant problem. It's a difficult issue for many families across the city to talk openly about, including many LGBTQ members, immigrant neighbors. It's a problem in the Asian community also, including challenges dealing with language access, talking directly to the police as well. Immigration concerns are also factored in whether or not a survivor of domestic violence goes forward. I look forward to the hearing that was previously discussed, and I would ask that my name be added to this resolution. Thank you, Council Worrell.
Thank you, Council Flynn. The Chair recognizes Council Weber. Councilor, you have the floor.
Thank you. And just to follow up on the last point that Council Flynn made, just, you know, one category here, just the thought that someone would not come forward for help because they were worried about how their immigration status would impact receiving services is something, you know, I think that we should make sure that people do not have any fears, that they can come forward without any repercussions. I like to highlight that the federal government does have a U-Visa program which provides legal status for somebody who has been the victim of domestic violence, even if they're undocumented, and that, you know, I believe the Boston Police Department's policy is to not share information with ICE, but to the extent, you know, that it's still possible that that would happen, we should work as a body to make sure victims of domestic violence feel like they can come forward regardless of their immigration status. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Weber. The Chair recognizes Council Brayden. Council, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam.
Um, thank you, Madam, sorry, you're not Madam, Mister, Mister Chair. Um, this whole conversation is incredibly painful, um, but a very, very important one nonetheless. Um, this issue is really about abuse of power and occurs across the lifespan. And as a physical therapist, uh, who spent a large part of my career working with elders, I'd also like to elevate the issue of elder abuse in this context of domestic and sexual violence. Um, elder, elderly mistreatment takes many forms. Uh, there's physical abuse, where people are just, uh, physically assaulted or beaten, psychological or emotional abuse, sexual abuse, financial abuse, and neglect. And, uh, it goes the whole gamut of, and many of these, uh, these, uh, events happen in the context of the domestic situation where elders are living with family members, some of whom may have had a very difficult relationship, perhaps when the, and there's a reversal of roles, that the, uh, the, the person that was the child, uh, becomes the caretaker for an elder who may have been abusive when, to that child when they were young. So it's a very complex and psychologically difficult situation. But I really just want to sort of flag that up as, as an area where it's probably a lot, a lot more prevalent than we appreciate. And also to flag up and, you know, uh, call out the wonderful work that our AID Strong, uh, does in this space, uh, trying to educate people about, uh, how to identify elder abuse and how, and what we can do about it. Assault or, uh, abuse of an elder is, is a, is a crime, uh, as any of, any other abuse is. And, uh, very often, it goes unseen and unaddressed. So I just want to elevate that concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? I'd like to thank, uh, Council President Louis Jen for bringing this forward, and also Counsel Mehea as a original co-sponsor. Just want to thank all the nonprofits and all the city agencies and departments, uh, that do, um, work around this. Um, and I think it's important that we continue to amplify, um, uh, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, uh, just to let people know of the resources and the support that's out there, but also just exploring how we could, um, you know, make the infrastructure and the resources, um, you know, a deeper investment, uh, because hearing Counsel Mehea, sometimes it's, uh, making sure that that individual is able to move out of their apartment, um, in the middle of the night, or they have the assistance or need clothes. So just making sure that we're being supportive of these nonprofits, uh, with the investment from the City of Boston, um, is so important in this case. Uh, would anyone like to add their name? Uh, Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Braden, Counsel Coletta Zapata, Counsel Durkin, Counsel Phanance Anderson, Counsel Fitzgerald, Counsel Flynn, uh, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Peppin, Counsel Santana, Counsel Weber, please add the chair. Uh, Counsel President Louis Jen and Counsel Mehea seek suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 1481. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. Docket number 1481 has been adopted. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 1482.
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Chair. That docket, um, has been withdrawn. Okay. We are now moving on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the personnel orders?
Docket number 1484, Counsel Louis Jen for Counsel Mehea, personnel order. Docket number 1485, Counsel Louis Jen for Counsel Flynn, personnel order. And, and docket number 1486, Counsel Louis Jen, personnel order.
Thank you. Um, the chair moves to passage of dockets numbers 1484 to 1486. I would also first just like to say thank you, uh, to my colleagues, to Counselor Worrell and Counsel Flynn for being present for, um, interviews. We will have a new staffer, um, on central staff, and we were able to interview her. And so just, I'm incredibly grateful for this new addition and for the work of our central staff. So, um, the chair moves to passage of dockets number 1484 to 1486. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The personnel orders have passed. Uh, do you, is it on the personnel orders?
No. No, it's not on personnel orders.
What is, is it?
I, could I, permission to speak?
The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn, but if it's not on personnel orders, it's unclear what you're speaking on. So is it, do you have, are you, is it a point of order? Is it a?
Yeah, I, thank you, Madam Chair, for recognizing me. I, I know we skipped over 1483. I just wanted to see if we can revisit 1483. Um, I know it was withdrawn, but I, I did want to respectfully make an argument on why it is relevant.
The matter has been withdrawn by the clerk's office. So there's no, there's no discussion on it. Thank you, Counsel Flynn. We are now moving on to green sheets. Is anyone looking to pull anything from the green sheets? Thank you. Um, I will just state that, uh, if you would like to pull something from the green sheets, is there a point?
Yeah, thank you. Could we just clarify if 1483, which is withdrawn, is the same as 1482, which was Counsel Peppin's resolution?
1482 has been withdrawn, and 1483 has been withdrawn.
But that was Counsel Flynn referenced 1483. So I was, and it was 1483 a different filing, or was it the same one? No, I don't want to, I'm just asking.
There were two orders. 1482 has been withdrawn. That was Counsel Peppin's filing, and docket number 1483 has been withdrawn.
Okay. Because I have withdrawn in the past also, but it was still on the floor. So that's why I was wondering if we were saying because it was withdrawn. It's clear that the clerk withdrew 1483, but it wasn't clear to me who withdrew 1482.
Counsel Peppin.
Okay, thank you. That's what I'm asking.
Thank you. Okay. The chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counsel, are you have a, you have a green sheets poll? Okay. Counsel Flynn, I will allow you, if there's another, something you'd like to say briefly, but the matter has been withdrawn.
Yes. Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I know, I, I believe you mentioned that it was withdrawn by the clerk, and the clerk mentioned it was withdrawn by the council president. And just wanted to see if I'm able to respectfully get any clarification on that, please. On, on who actually withdrew it.
Pursuant to Rule 15, the clerk withdraws matters from the docket.
Do you want me to read?
No, that's, that's efficient. Uh, the chair recognizes Counsel Durkin for a green sheets poll.
I'd like to pull 1433, which is on page 14.
What's the docket number?
1433, and it's on page 14, Planning, Development, and Transportation.
From the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, docket number 1433, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $167,104 in the form of a grant from the Massachusetts Electric Vehicle Incentive Program, grant awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, to be administered by the Transportation Department. The grant will fund the acquisition and installation of four direct current fast-charging electric vehicle stations at four Boston municipal parking lots.
Thank you. Absent objection, this docket is properly before the body. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. This docket, um, I tried to pull last week, and I got some more information from my colleagues. Um, so the four locations where these, um, mass EVIP grants, uh, sorry, the four locations where these electric chargers will go from this grant are Municipal Lot Number Three, which is 115 Harvard Ave, Alston, Municipal Lot Number Eight, uh, 10 Taft Hill Terrace, Rosendale, uh, Municipal Lot Number Twelve, 37 Winthrop Street, Hyde Park, and Municipal Lot Number Nineteen, which is 16 Hamlet Street, Dorchester. So I'm asking my colleagues to, uh, pass this grant for $167,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Durkin, Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, seats passage of docket number 1433. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket is passed. Is anyone else looking to pull anything from the green sheets?
No.
No? Okay, I'd just like to just make one request, and not, this is not pointed to Counsel Durkin at all, but just in talking to central staff earlier, uh, Counselor, um, Michelle, Central Staff Director, she sends emails out about green sheets polls the day before we have a meeting. So if you are pulling something from the green sheets, please, as much as you can, let her know about the docket number beforehand, just because there's some work that happens on the backend that they can prepare for, if they know that there's a green sheets poll docket number. So this is just a request, not at all related to your poll today, but just in the future that, um, that you make, uh, central staff aware of, uh, the green sheets. But I, to, to be honest, I like, don't see those emails, didn't see that she sends those emails, but she does. She sends them every Tuesday before the meeting, and if we can let her know, that would be great. Thank you. Um, so if no one else has anything to pull from the green sheets, we are now moving on to late files. I'm informed by the clerk that there are two late file matters. One is a, okay. Okay, we'll take the late file matters, one by one. We'll first, uh, do the late file matter from the mayor. Um, all those in favor of adding the late file appointment, uh, matter to the record, say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. That late file matter has been added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, can you please read the file, the late, that late file matter into the record?
First late file, a letter from the, uh, Mayor Wu, in accordance with the provisions of Section 5-5.10 of the City of Boston Municipal Code, I hereby appoint Tania Del Rio of 26 Terragram Street, Boston, Mass. 02128, Commissioner for the City of Boston Inspection Services Department, effective February 26, 2024.
Thank you. This matter will be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, can you please read, uh, the, the next late file matter, and then we will take a vote on adding it.
Second late file matter, offered by Counsel Ed Flynn, resolution in support of the International Longshores Association and their labor dispute with the United States Maritime Alliance. Whereas the deferred adoption of this resolution would tend to defeat its purpose, which is to show support for the International Longshoremen's Association and their labor dispute with the U.S. Maritime Alliance. It is hereby declared to be an emergency call for the City Council to take action pursuant to Rule 46. Therefore, be it resolved that the City Council stands in support of the dock workers of the International Longshoremen's Association and their demands for fair wages, safe working conditions, and protection against automation.
Thank you. We will take a vote to add this late file matter into the record. All those in, okay, all those in, okay, there's an objection to the late file matter. Um, and so this late file matter will not be added to the agenda.
Madam Chair?
The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn, although there's no, really no discussion, usually, once there's a late file matter, if there's an objection, there's no discussion. I'll allow you 30 seconds to speak on this matter so that we can move forward, but it's, it's just not added to the agenda. There's an objection. Rule 46 requires unanimous consent to suspend Rule 12, and there's no unanimous consent.
Okay. I won't, I won't speak on it since Counsel Durkin objected to it. Uh, this was, this was a resolution in support of working men and women of Boston. Counsel Durkin feels differently.
Thank you. We are now moving on to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there are three, three additions to the consent agenda. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. We are now on to announcements. Please remember, these are for upcoming dates and events. I'd first like to, uh, well, he's not here, so I feel even better about saying it. Um, there are three events happening, two events happening in Counsel Peppin's district. The Mata Pantene Center, the Dietrich Wise, uh, block party is this Saturday from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. Um, and there's also the Rosendale Day Parade on Sunday. Also, we know that our upcoming, uh, Hispanic Atlantic Heritage Month event is two weeks from today. Uh, hopefully everyone's getting ready, have community members lined up. It should be a really great event. Want to again thank Counsel Santana, Peppin, and Mehea for their help in putting it together. Also, immediately following this meeting, we'll have a lunch and learn in the Curly Room with, uh, Boys and Girls Club. Shout out to Leslie Ufoly, who's in the house, and, uh, Robert Lewis Jr., who will, who's also, will also be here. We have some great food from Spinelli's. It's Italian American Heritage Month. That was not intentional, but their food is really good. Um, and so I hope that my colleagues can join us. If you have any announcements, now is the time. The chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
I believe Counsel Fitzgerald has an announcement. Uh, you can precede me.
Okay. Uh, the chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald. You have the floor.
I appreciate that. Uh, athletics is such an important part, uh, of who we are, and this past weekend at the Mission Hill Road Race, I'd first like to say thank you to all my colleagues that were able to make it. But when we talk about athletes on this body specifically, uh, and people who rise above, uh, and really show, I would just like to take this moment, uh, to congratulate our colleague Benjamin J. Weber as the winner in his division. I'll just say his age division. We won't say the age, but in his age division, uh, it was great to present, uh, Counsel Fitzgerald presenting Counsel Durkin's, uh, citation to Counsel Weber, uh, at the thing. So I think that was a first that happened, but, uh, what an athlete.
The chair now recognizes Counsel Weber. Uh, congratulations, although I'm still, you didn't have to call out all the counselors who weren't running on Saturday. That was not very nice, but you now have the floor.
Okay, well, thank, thank you. I just, I'm, uh, I've, I've run three 5Ks since I was elected, and I'm undefeated against my fellow city counselors. I challenge all of you to, to beat me. I'm happy to have, to see you on.
Counselor Peppin has ran one.
Yes, well, uh, so I, well, I look forward to a clash of the Titans in the next, in the, in the next 5K. And thank you, Counsel Fitzgerald, uh, you know, for that. I, I appreciate it. Um, so I, I just, I, I have an announcement, uh, a little more serious. You know, uh, following our meeting a couple weeks ago, where we debated how to remember October 7th, uh, I've been in touch with rabbis, Jewish advocates, other Jewish people in Boston. Uh, there's a, there's a old proverb that if you ask two Jews a question, you'll get three opinions. Um, and, you know, so what's, there, there's a lot of debate about how we can, uh, remember victims on October 7th. While there's differences, uh, what stuck out is, is everyone wants, uh, a, a safe space where people can remember victims, honor them in, in a solemn way, uh, and, uh, they're, uh, and to remember both the victims on October 7th and make space for victims, uh, in the aftermath of October 7th. So I'd just like to highlight a couple events that are coming up, um, and which I hope to attend, and I invite my colleagues to attend with me. Um, on the evening of October 7th, there'll be an evening of remembrance and hope at the Wang Theater. Um, uh, also on October 7th, and my office has information, there's a virtual, uh, gathering, uh, uh, from noon to 1:00, uh, to discuss, for people to share their experiences and reflect. There is also in Boston, in the evening, there's a, uh, October 7th memorial gathering for Israeli and Palestinian life that's sponsored by If Not Now. Uh, and I'd also like to call out, um, uh, Temple Benet Torah, which is in my district in West Roxbury, uh, which on Yom Kippur on October 12th is, is holding a special remembrance space for Israelis and Palestinians, and I hope to attend that. Um, yeah, it's also, tonight is the beginning of the Jewish New Year, Rosh Hashanah. I encourage my colleagues to wish their Jewish friends and constituents shana tova. Uh, and, uh, you know, I look forward to gathering with people in Boston and the surrounding areas, uh, to try to come together and, uh, find ways that we can move forward. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Weber. The chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to, um, October's a special month in my house. Three birthdays. My son Brian, who is proudly serving his country, so this will be the first birthday in 35 years that I won't see him on his special days, so I want to wish him a happy birthday. My son Colin would be celebrating his 28th birthday, and my son Michael has a birthday Friday, and he stopped by earlier when we were on our break. I was able to go out and talk to him and his fiance. They were here in the building picking up their marriage license. So we have another special occasion coming near the end of the month, so I just wanted to rise and wish my three boys a happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also wanted to recognize, as Counsel Weber mentioned, the start of Rosh Hashanah, and to wish my friends in the Jewish community a happy, healthy New Year. Madam Chair, I also wanted to inform my colleagues about an ongoing strike that's taking place in my neighborhood in South Boston and in Counselor Coletta's district as well. But in my, in my neighborhood in South Boston, we have a lot of members from the Longshoremen's Union, including my two grandfathers, longtime members of the long shore, as well as my father, who's an active member of the Longshoremen's Union and still is at age 85. They are on strike. I have many members in my district. Counselor Coletta, you have many members in your district as well. These workers are fighting for respect, they're fighting for dignity, they're fighting for justice, and I had the opportunity with the, with my father, the former mayor, to visit last night to the site in South Boston, the Port of Boston, named after him for his work on the, on the Port of Boston and his grandfather. But I do want to take this opportunity to acknowledge the men and women of the Longshoremen's Union for their incredible work in making sure that our ships are, the supplies from the ships are taken off in a professional manner, sent out across the country. They play a critical role in our economy, and they are on strike, looking for justice, seeking justice, seeking respect. I stand, I stand with them, and I'll always stand with the longshoremen and working men and women of this city. They've always stood with us. Actually, the longshoremen, longshoremen during the pandemic, they worked every day. Many other people were able to work from home. I'm not criticizing anybody from working from home, but the longshoremen were unloading ships, were loading ships. So we and people across the country could get needed supplies coming in from various countries. The closest port, obviously, to Europe in the United States is Boston. Boston's economy is also based on maritime operations. So I just, I didn't want to let this opportunity to pass without acknowledging the men and women of the Longshoremen's Union. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. No other announcements. I skipped over birthdays, how could I? I was remiss to not mention that we have a birthday among us this coming Friday. Happy early birthday, Counsel Santana, wishing you all the best. And we also have Dulce Sandoval Bernal, it's also an October baby, in Counsel Mejia's office. We are now moving on to memorials. Today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of a few people. If anyone would like to speak on behalf of someone who has passed, now is the moment. So just turn your light on. Yeah. The Chair recognizes Counsel Finn Anderson. You have the floor.
Sorry, before memorials, I had an announcement. Is that okay? So this next Monday, the Roxbury Strategic Master Plan will be meeting for their monthly meeting. I'm encouraging all my colleagues, at-large counselors, to attend. Roxbury Strategic Master Plan, as you know, is a zoning agreement with Boston, and originally filed or passed by Mayor, the late Mayor Menino, peace be upon him. And so this Monday, my office, in collaboration with universities, that we've been doing some action research on spatial mapping, anti-displacement, studio action research, and we've put this together in the last couple of years, where we're going to be delivering a presentation on what anti-displacement should look like. I've been working with academic partners, such as James Jennings and many more, who will be moving toward looking at 15-minute streets and how to create that in Roxbury and D7 as a whole. But this presentation is very exciting. It includes one of the examples that you guys know, the art corridor, residency corridors in Roxbury and so many other, but fighting displacement on a commercial housing and environmental level. So I will be needing your support, as well as Saturdays for advisory council. The advisory council has been asking for at-large counselors. You are all welcomed. I know that I've invited you in the past, but maybe creating a more coordinated effort for you guys to actually meet and hopefully collaborating to work together. A lot of exciting stuff happening in Roxbury and D7. We did the state of South End, the state of Roxbury, where we take a full inventory of what the administration is doing for each neighborhood inside of the district, and then we deliver, in combination with my work, then we deliver to the neighborhoods. And again, encouraging my colleagues to show up to these town halls and all of this exciting work that's happening. We'll be needing your support in moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And apologies if I didn't see your light earlier. Okay, we are now moving on to memorials. If anybody would like to speak on anyone we're adjourning on behalf of today. Today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. On behalf of Counsel Peppin, Caesar Sanchez; Middy B. Thomas; Joseph Blomquist; on behalf of Counsel Weber, Kwame J. Clark; on behalf of myself, Francis J. Lane; Brian Cullens; Dikembe Mutombo. A moment of silence. The Chair moves that when the council adjourned today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. The council is scheduled to meet again in the Ayonella Chamber on Wednesday, October 9th, 2024, at noon. Thank you to my colleagues, central staff, the clerk, and the clerk's office, and our council stenographer. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. The council is adjourned. Thank you.[1772.21][1772.21]